To the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anything that anyone would like to add on the agenda? Brandon, is it all?
Yeah, everything's in order.
Comments from select board members, I think not on the agenda? Mike?
No one.
Town manager?
Hi, oh wait until my town manager.
Citizens, if anything not on the agenda?
I'm Ryan Lohner. I just wanted to invite the select board and actually all Weathersfielders to visit the Dan Foster House this summer. Our hours are 12 to 4 on Saturdays. And DeForest has done the most amazing job with the collection, which is an unusual collection in its depth and breadth. So I really encourage you to come. The Howard Beach is often there, running the forge. And Lenny Rivera is from Cavendish, and she is running the old Koval route floor room of many days. Is she coming this, coming Saturday?
She'll be there this Saturday, yeah.
The other thing is to look for, and we'll send notices out, in September, September 21st at Fort Four, and on October 18th at the Center Meeting House, we are doing a bicentennial play, an original play. Patty Arson has been writing it and seeking commentary about the Articles of Association, which Weathersfield is the only town, other towns haven't, but we're the only town who actually has the original document from 1775, which indicated the beginning of strong dissension with England and George III and particularly Parliament. So, the play being shown twice, and the Dan Foster House is open, Forge leaving all summer from 12 to 4 on Saturday. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And forgive me for departing, but I want to stop a replay tonight.
Anybody else? Review minutes from the previous meeting?
I hope we accept your minutes from the last meeting?
Okay. Any discretion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Application for display of fireworks, 966 planes run. The first one.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Like that stand up and hold him?
Sure.
I had prepared remarks. I was, one of us just here to answer your questions. You all might, I guess I could say a few things. When I put my application in, we were kind of in that flux between two days, late day, and the sheriff's department coming on. I was under advisement by the employees of the town office to not have a police person sign off. So I didn't want my information, my application to come in with prejudice. I tried, but it seems to make more sense to me now that we've got the sheriff's department involved, that shall you grant access for the permit, that it would make more sense to me that the sheriff's department can take ownership of that event. So I'll leave with that. The other thought, I guess I'm just coming to me now, I talked to Brandon some about the process, and I think one of the asks from this board was that I acquired some insurance. I did go out and request from a local company, a commercial liability policy that may be comparable to what you might see from one of the professional organizations. We, Brandon and I noted on the policy that was returned to me, that there was some type of exclusion that made fireworks a little tricky. So we punted it back to the carrier. That was Friday, unfortunately. So if I'm unable this weekend to secure any other liability insurance, again, if you so grant me the permit, I won't hold you to the July 4th date for the problems of having the insurance. So if it takes me some time or us some time to come up with a amount that's spare for everybody, we can do the fireworks another day. I think that's all I have. I think there were three things from my review of your past two meetings that seem to keep coming up, some of which you noted in your work packet, regarding a constituent operator, what in what wasn't a public display, and then we already talked about the insurance. Competent operator to name and use. Seems competent to the point where that person can read or write ball directions. Public display, I wasn't asking to launch these fireworks in my basement under cover of darkness in private. Public fireworks, fireworks inherently tend to seem to be public. And then the insurance, of which I was kind of caught off guard when I put my application in, it seemed to read on your permit that if they were consumer style, which is the 1.4G blast fireworks, that they, that the property owner's insurance policy would infer product, or it means that's how it read in your permit. So it seems that we've kind of mushroomed out into other requests that weren't on the initial permit. So I felt a little blindsided by some of those requests, but I'm doing my best to kind of, it would be fair to all parties that have concerns. That's where I'm at.
I think that based on the Supreme Court decision that you brought up at the last meeting, we've all had more time to read it, and BLCT just sent out a summary of it that made it a little more understandable. To me, the issue, the primary issue resting, whether this is a public display or private. We have no authority to regulate private displays.
Sure.
So if it's a, if it's a private event where you just have family and friends, this board doesn't have the authority to grant you permission to do that.
In your mind, what would make it a public event?
A statement that it's public, advertising that it's open to the public, and then other application that we also have in front of us tonight clearly states it's a public event, the public is invited, it's been advertised as allowing the public to attend. For me, that, that's advice is as a public. I'm sorry.
Do they charge for any of those attendees that are not campers, or?
I do not know.
They do, but that's for entertainment. It's not, it's, it's for, I'm in a band that happens to play there, and they're this weekend. And they charge admission for the bands that come playing.
Okay.
So they, they charge admission to, but they do that every weekend. It's not for the fireworks. Fireworks are just, and again, that is a business declared public. I wasn't struggling so much with the public thing. I, I, I think, I think that was somewhat clarified a bit in our discussion at the last meeting, that pretty much if anybody's there watching it, it's public event. You know, because somebody's sitting there watching it, it's not just him. That seemed, John, I think you would talk a little bit to that. And you continue? No?
When you're ready.
No, well, anyway. The issue for me, though, still is, is really the insurance. Insurance, you have an insurance policy that clearly shows that they do not cover damages caused by.
We were, we were all a little caught up.
If I can finish this. Pyrotechnics are not covered. And if we were to issue, you know, your explanation is fine, we could say, you know, we're going to do it because it's private and we have no authority. But if we were to issue a permit, and you have no insurance, you burn down a neighbor's house, their insurance says we don't cover it, yours says we don't cover it, they come to the town, we've, we've signed a permission slip, now, now you want the taxpayers to cover that house? You're one, I'm one, I don't want them. Sorry. The insurance is big for me. That's, it's necessary. And regardless of what the policy would say, I would think anybody that wants to do something like that wants to make sure their butt's covered. You know, I fix motorcycles for a living. I have liability insurance because if somebody gets hurt, going to get sued. And it's not necessarily the customer that's going to sue you, it's the lawyers that come out to protect the customer or whoever got hurt, that, that's going to come out. So you really have no connection to where you're, where the cuts off.
I do want to say, I empathize, sympathize, I apologize for our application saying one thing, and then we're saying something else, like we pulled it out of a hat. And I had said at the last meeting, I didn't feel that it was fair. So I can certainly understand your frustration and, and this not being a clear process.
So to respond to Mr. Todd's comments on insurance, I'm not standing here today to say that I, I am not going to get insurance, and I'm asking for your permission without insurance. It's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying, if I cannot meet the July 5th date, which I originally intended on it for, not being aware of this new ask for additional insurance, I wouldn't change my date. I could change it to August 10th or pick a date. I could bring, I could bring the policy back to the force, send it to Brandon, have him redo it, so that it meets, you know, whatever criteria you set forth. I guess with that said, if I could have some direction as to what type of liability you would like me to get, as far as the amount, that may give me some better direction. As of right now, I think the policy that I thought I was getting was 2 million. I'm not sure what the.
Well, it is, but it screws that particular.
That's correct. You are correct.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we still, I think we still have some questions, though. What do you first?
Um, but. I, I guess for me, the stumbling block is public versus private, because that's the number one kickoff in the, in the legislation, is that if it's a public display, we have authority. If it's a private, we do not. I remember that Mr. Arison had a much broader interpretation of what public means. I'm more narrow. If you're going to invite the public and advertise that this is a public event, let's say we have the authority. But if you're inviting just a close circle of friends and family, I'm going to, I'm going to consider that not private, I mean, not public. So competent, yes, the state law clearly says competent is, as Mr. Arison said, can you read the directions? If you satisfy the needs of the fire department and the fire marshal, who am I to contest with that? I certainly have no expertise in that area. So my biggest thing, and, and also the insurance, that is an important part. But if we can't get past the public versus private, to me, that's my point.
There, there is, and you just triggered the thought, there is another issue. This law is very clear that we have that authority if we don't have a fire chief. We now, we now have a fire chief.
Right.
So that changed everything, too.
That does, yes.
So.
Again, I think we're.
We're women.
We started out with a pedal here, with a big stone where it seemed to be, the rules seemed to be changing as we go, is what I'm kind of feeling. And I, I don't know if this, I'm sure this board has never issued a permit. I know other boards have in the town of Weathersfield. I just don't ever there, remember there being such discussion.
Well, the, the one, the, the change that I just mentioned happened at the last meeting. We, we, the town manager named the fire chief at the last meeting.
Correct.
So that, in the, in the statute, statute says we have the authority unless you have a fire chief, then it's fire chiefs that handle it.
And, and we have a policy that we need to revise.
Yes.
To define what a public display is, to define the amount of insurance coverage, type of insurance coverage, and so forth. I think for the fire chief, we have to then follow them.
Yeah.
Don?
I'm going to give her had some information, though.
First of all, regarding the liability right on the permit that he signed, it says the town is not liable. Okay? Does that relieve him of the responsibility to provide you with spot documentation? That's up to you guys. As far as public versus private, the best of my knowledge, the town has not contacted fire prevention. And I talked to Landon Wheeler, who's the assistant director, as recently as this morning. If you, the position you folks are talking about would limit half the fireworks shows that are shown in Vermont. Even Forest, you attended one at my house that was private. If you will, I didn't invite the whole town, I just come up with friends up and we had a show. I got a show coming up in Benton, it's for the Benton High School, three or four classes get together, they have a show put on. The town can, they'll see it, but they're not invited. Will they show up? There's no, and the, the way, the statute is written poorly. Everybody agrees with that. BLCT agrees with that. It's so ambiguous, it leaves you guys in a very awkward position of what to do. Fire prevention, and this is directly from Landon Wheeler, he said, is there an audience? Yes, that is public. I don't know, there's nowhere, there's no definition about private versus public. I think in our minds there is, and I agree with that, that, you know, probably what happens with people, that's private. But nonetheless, the way it's being enforced and right across the state, they're not having this conversation, to best of my knowledge, about private versus public. Last thing that I'll speak to is that NFA, or excuse me, 11, 2177, gives the authority to the fire chief, police chief, or the legislative body, if you don't have a fire chief. As of two weeks ago, you've got a fire chief. Okay? Right now, you're going to take everything right to the letter of, literally, then Josh is the only one that can issue this permit.
No problem.
I don't think that's a really good idea.
Oh, is that it? That's all?
Well, Josh Campo and Andrea Murray, both have their hands.
Okay, well, John can finish it before the interruption.
The second part of that is, we don't have a police chief anymore. We have a contracted service who has a leader. So I think you probably got quite a few ordinances that need to be cleaned up, so that he can be our acting police chief in that function. But as of right now, we don't have a police chief. So the, that, in my view, the only person that can issue it is Josh. That puts him in, in a position he never anticipated two weeks ago. I think you guys should finish the process with this permit, allow the guy to put on his show, because Josh Dolphin signed off on it, and Bill Daniel signed off on it, and I think that should take care of.
No, we almost did not. We did not have any police.
Okay, so just Josh and Bill on signed off on it?
Yeah, yeah. Both Josh Campo and Josh Dolphin signed off.
Okay.
In their, both as fire chief and as fire marshal.
Okay, I stand corrected. Anyway, that gives you some confidence that the operator is confident what he's going to do. I looked at the diagrams, and it meets NFA, go, about 70 feet, 30 inch of show. He's shooting off into three quarters, 125. If you take into consideration wind on the day, it adjusts accordingly. If it's going to fall right back towards the audience, you angle them a little bit, so that going up and comes back and goes off where it's supposed to. I think you should just approve it, move on, clean up the ordinance, so that it reads better. And I'm actively trying to get, I don't know why fire prevention doesn't want to touch this, but they don't. They, they, we don't want any more regulations. So this is one that they should actively at least clean up the word with some definitions, so that people that come in, they don't come in this situation with, excuse me, I was going to say, wait, you spent way too much time pondering something that's poorly written.
Josh?
Good evening. I, I kind of had an idea that this might be coming up, and I, I just want to say that these two applications were submitted under an existing policy before a fire chief was existent in the town. Although moving forward, I'm, I'm open to managing a policy if it's, if it's better written in black and white. The, the current policy is, is very muddy, and I would look for the select board to make a decision based on the timing of everything. Because as I said, these were submitted under an existing policy without a current fire chief.
I look like our speakers are off.
Murray?
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Now we can.
Okay, perfect. So I have a couple of points I'd like to make. Number one, the issue of public fireworks display is clearly stated, the National Fire Protection Association, which the Vermont Fire State Fire Marshal references, code 1123, code for fireworks display, defines a public display as one conducted in front of an audience and not limited to a private group, typically public celebrations like 4th of July, outdoor events in parks, stadiums, and beaches, fairs, parades, and community festivals. Secondly, the Vermont statute is not vague in this particular matter. 20 VSA 3132 stipulates that in order for you to receive a permit, the individual must hold a federal permit for the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, and a municipal permit. The municipality does have the authority to add further guidelines to who they're going to permit and where they're going to permit these events based on community limitations. But they do have to follow state law. The state fire marshal may adopt reasonable rules for granting permits for supervised public displays of fireworks by municipalities, fair associations, amusement parks, and other organizations or groups of individuals. They make it very clear that this is a public event that the public, anybody can attend. If there's an entrance fee, it's still publicly available. And my last point that Mr. Arison just pointed out, 1.75 inch shells, they require 125 feet of space. I'll ask you to look at the permit sight view that was submitted by Mr. Dexter, and it's less than or right at 100 feet, which means that at a minimum, 23 feet of that radius, because it's a round radius. You can compare that with the other permit for the, the other fireworks permit. It is not just this section's 90 feet, this section's 100 feet. He didn't annotate all of the trees along our property line. There are massive groves of trees that are within that firing radius. And my husband's there to show two years ago, the massive explosions that happened when there was a major misfire, where we had to at nearly midnight walk our property to look for the misfired shells. And I'm very concerned. I have a historic property here that we are trying to get registered, my barn, and, and you know, that's very close to our property. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. There, there are things that we need to regulate as far as insurance, et cetera. But the state law and the Supreme Court was clear that private use of firearms is illegal, period. That only public displays are allowed. So, and I know that people want to have it and like to have it, and I'm sorry that the, the laws don't coincide with what our wants and desires are. And I want to have a positive relationship with my neighbors, and I understand that this is going to be devastating, and I'm very sorry for that. But it was terrifying. Two years ago, it scared us badly to see these explosions that were very unsafe. And the property is just way too small. I highly encourage, our chairwoman mentioned that Hoyington Field was too small of an area to have firework display, and she personally would not approve that. But this property is much smaller than that. So why is this discussion even continuing? I just don't understand. The, I would just like to be, let's look at the facts, let's look at the law, very simply, the simple letter of the law, and let's not try to dance around, I heard this person say this, this person says that, and we don't need to look at this statement or other. The Supreme Court was clear, all fireworks in Vermont are illegal, except for sprinklers and except for those novelty poppers, period. So it does not absolve the select board. If the select board approves an illegal permit, it does not absolve you of liability. Even if you just write it on the paper that you're not going to be responsible, that does not absolve you of liability. So, and I'll just finish with that, that I hope that you make a really responsible decision based on the law and the facts. Thank you.
Yeah, so that was my way. And I will say, the Dexters are the best neighbors I could hope for. They're wonderful neighbors. And we're, we're in a close neighborhood. And over the years, the properties have been subdivided off, and so their, their property is like a shotgun. It's a narrow, narrow law property. We abut it on two sides. So on one hand, it's very, it is very clear with the law, it is very clear what's open to the general public and what's not. I empathize, just as DeForest mentioned earlier, that fireworks are a lot of fun. I love fireworks. I love celebrating and forth. But unfortunately, only public displays are permitted by law currently in Vermont. And it was so important to clarify that, that the Vermont League of Cities and Towns published guidance from the Supreme Court. So this is a situation where, okay, what do we do from here? This permit can't be approved. Even if it could be approved, I would go into all of the issues where I, I just feel like it's not safe having that size of fireworks next to my property right there with, with barns, with old houses, and cabins and such. There's, there's issues with that. I'm not even going to go there. This permit can't be approved, unfortunately. What we can do is we can revise our policy. Our policy right now says the board does the permit, it's not the fire department, like the chief, the fire chief said. The policy has to get caught up with state law. We should provide Weathersfield the opportunity to hold a public fireworks display for the town in a location that's safe, that's insured, and a certified trained operator with proper ATF approvals. I spent three decades in the military. I was a pyrotechnics user and instructor. They're, they are a class of explosives. They are, this is no joke. They are dangerous. The size of a 1.75 inch round can kill you easily. So this is not something to take lightly, like, oh, everyone loves fireworks, let's enjoy a bunch of fireworks. That's, that's not how it works. But we also saw what happened with fires across the country this past year. Weathersfield and our, and we don't need to put our firefighters at risk. I'm a huge supporter of, of our fire department, both stations. And, and they don't need to be at risk sitting out there waiting for a fire either. So that's, that's my comment. So thank you for your time.
Consumer fireworks.
Which there was no difference.
Yeah, because they give the, the, as defined by law, fireworks means, and then, and then it lists like all of the stuff. But they don't break it down into either consumer or firework, yeah, they go into retail firework. Consumer fireworks are any retail fireworks sold to the general public for private use, as opposed to fireworks that are sold to, sold and used for an authorized and supervised public display. What is an authorized and supervised public display? What, what are the, what's the difference in fireworks that are sold to those types of users as opposed to what is considered private use? I guess, to me, private use is, I have my grandkids come over and I buy fireworks that I light off on my lawn, and it's me and the kids. And it's me and the kids at my house. And even that's illegal, we, we aren't going to permit that, but that's illegal, right? Didn't that what they say?
I couldn't answer that question if you want me to.
I've got it, I'm going to read it from the Supreme Court. The conclusion is it is illegal regardless of any local authorization to sell, possess or use consumer fireworks. So that, that would say that those, that says that those fireworks that I can buy and show to my kids, it's still illegal. Right? Isn't that what that says? But it never goes into a definition of what retail fireworks or opposed to the, the fireworks that are sold and used for authorized and supervised public display. Is that a, a size thing, Joan, or, you know, height, what is it? I, I go to you because I know you're involved with that and it's.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to exactly how poorly written. Again, the quandary that it left the OCT and the Supreme Court to make decisions. It is so bad that part C of the, of the VSA, of, of Title 20, of the power, talking about prohibit transportation of fireworks to separate interstate property. In other words, next week, I'll be up in Montpelier picking up a truck. The trucks scattered all over the state, crowded, going here and there, they're all illegal because they're interstate. That's how poorly it's written and, and for the life of me, why? Fire prevention, they, they have the authority to actually modify the rules, so they can't modify the ordinance. So they really need to do a parallel course where they set up some rules and the ordinance really gets cleaned up. And why they don't have an appetite, I'll tell you, Landon Weaver told me, because we don't want additional regulation. Gosh, something like New Hampshire. I don't know, I don't have any answer to that. But they're, but they're putting 252 towns in a very awkward position with, by lack of action to clean up something that's written so poorly.
I'll just say, if you guys thought. I'll just say, my understanding that there's two classes of fireworks, I need to answer your question, I'll do the best I can, I'm an accountant. 1.3G and 1.4G. 1.3G has a larger quantity of what they call flash and it makes a bigger explosion. It could be a bigger mortar round, say six or eight inch, which again, just following the same math, 70 feet per inch. The 1.4 is what they're calling consumer grade fireworks. A smaller amount of flash or explosive that we're talking about, two grams, yeah. So 1.3G is just a class code. Those are your big, what you would see at, say Disney World or Epcot and those large shows. 1.4G is what you can drive over to Newport, New Hampshire and buy at the fireworks store over there. The discussion about having an ATF license, that would pertain to the professional grade 1.3G class fireworks. Not the, back to the competent operator 1.4G fireworks, if that helps.
Could I ask you a question while you're there? Did you, did you set off the fireworks the years at the Murray's?
I've set off fireworks in my house for 10 years.
Okay, so you, you were then the operator?
Murray's, moving to the state.
Okay. No, I'm just asking about the year that they had issues.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you do have one that, that doesn't, you know, eject all the way.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion. In the interest of not grinding our wheels anymore, I'm going to make a motion to deny this application on the grounds that we do not have sign off from a police chief or the town manager. We don't have appropriate insurance coverage. And the competency of the operator is in question, in my opinion, based on the testimony of the abutters. And I offer my profound apology for having to do this, but that's where my heart says I need to make my motion, so that's my motion.
Second.
Motion to make any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any phones? Any extensions? Motion carries, sorry, Mr. Dexter.
All right.
In the interim, we will clean up our act, change our application and try again next year.
Great. Thank you for your extended amount of time.
Thank you for your understanding. It's tough.
Run Bear Camp Run. Application for fireworks. Mr. Jordan?
Mr. Jarrett is not here, he told me that I can give him a call. We didn't review this application with the town attorney. And the sheriff did sign off on this application on the police chief line as the police for the town. Both fire chiefs signed up on it and myself. They refused the insurance. It is a public display in the sense that anybody can go join their campground and watch these fireworks. And we haven't had any issues in the past, so you recommend that it is approved.
I need to approve the application for fireworks display at Run Bear Camp Run.
Date, time, date of the application number, anything was going, any of that?
One moment, please. For July 5th between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock. Do you want one more? Should there be more detail here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were. No, no, that's.
Location of the display is 167 Thrasher Road in Scotty, Vermont.
At 167 Thrasher Road. I'll start my motion over again. I make a motion to approve the application filed by Mark Gerard for fireworks, a public fireworks display at 167 Thrasher Road in Scotty on July 5th between 9:00 and 10:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, warrant to impound unlicensed dogs.
Kelly, I'd like to table this for, that is a future agenda. It'll be, I have stuff to work through with the sheriff and also the animal control officer.
Do we need a motion to move on?
It's up to you guys, do you want to table it or just, it may not even be the next meeting, it may be the meeting after that.
Just move to future, a future. I make a motion to approve the article of warrant to, to impound unlicensed dogs, move it to future agenda items.
Second.
Any questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nuisance and unkempt property ordinance.
There it is.
So this is an update to what I presented last time. The attorney has reviewed it and then sent back a copy with lots of changes. So all of the changes that Ethan provided were accepted and that's what's in the package. One of the main differences, they took out unkempt, that, the section about unkempt property being too subjective. And basically, all the, all the intentions are kept with the, just addressing public nuisance properties, what they termed it. So how do you want to go about it? Do you want me to, to kind of run through what the process is or have you reviewed it, any questions? I think there's some follow-up stuff that goes beyond the ordinance in terms of our internal policies and processes and stuff like that. But if you want to start with the language of this ordinance, do you have any questions, Charlie?
Under three definitions. I had asked for a definition of what number one really means, but I think I have a solution for that.
Okay.
And that is to actually take the one away from that and take the colon out after that in, in the, in A where it says, so it reads nuisance means an activity conditioned sound over accumulation of materials or lack of maintenance on a property that interferes with reasonable use and enjoyment of the neighboring properties. Semi-colon by, and then, and then the rest of it becomes one, two, three and four.
That's grammatical, but that's good.
Yeah, I looked into the, that word and it basically, in lack of a definition, it just says that that's standard legal language in, in state and national way. So it basically comes down to the discretion of who the board appoints as the enforcement officer.
And then number five, what, what currently is number five violates zoning or building regulations? Well, that's what zoning is, is zoning and building regulations. This is a separate ordinance.
Right.
If, if you're in violation of zoning, we have you to do enforcement on that.
Right, so I think this allows us to use both tools. So we could still enforce the zoning violation through zoning. But if the zoning, if, but if this, if someone's in violation of this ordinance as well, then both avenues are available for enforcement.
I, I think the zoning is always there.
Yeah, as long as it's a zoning violation, yeah. So there could be a situation where there's some violations of ordinance, but not a zoning violation.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the, the only reason why I don't mean zoning in here or building regulations, because they're in zoning. Those regulations already exist.
Yeah.
This is a separate ordinance for something else.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that makes sense.
On that same line, building regulations, we don't have any building regulations at the local level.
Yeah, I did notice that.
Why would we include that? I don't mind including zoning or health regulations, but
Yeah, nope.
Building regulations, we don't have at this. I did have one question. Should read my notes. In section two, the last sentence says it constitutes public nuisances. But then the definition always says nuisance, so is there a difference between a public nuisance and a nuisance?
Where are you saying just nuisance?
So, can you take public out of it on section two? Because being a former zoning administrator, I see those as two different things. It's a public nuisance and then there's a nuisance, so it's splitting hairs, I think the first two made.
The last two words, you, number two, purpose.
Yeah, so, so it seemed like everything says public nuisance, did you see something that didn't have public in it?
The definition. In section three, A, it just says nuisance, it doesn't say public nuisance.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that splitting hairs?
So I can, I can clarify that with the attorney, whether he thinks the word, I, because I asked him whether public needed to be in there. It's, he's, it sounded like not necessarily, but he wanted it. So I gave him a couple of different alternative titles instead, do any of these work and he liked to include where public. So should we just add public to?
As a former administrator, I would trip over that.
Yeah.
I would rather see public nuisance under the definitions than just nuisance by itself.
Yeah. One of the questions that I had was on the seven days. And so in enforcement process, section five, A, so section two, the written notice shall describe the nuisance and the time to cure or abate the nuisance, which shall not be longer than seven days from the date of the written notice. And so, wondering if we should have a little bit more flexibility in that since there's probably, most situations can't be cleaned up in seven days, even if someone really wanted to comply.
That's an ambitious deadline.
And then the, the next part of that is that we shall enforce or impose fines after that, if, if it's not cured. So I don't want to have a situation where we're working with someone who's trying.
Three days is probably, otherwise you can collect a lot more fines, it's only seven days, but that doesn't seem terribly.
Yeah, I think most of the time we're trying to seek voluntary compliance.
I, I would agree with 30 days.
30 days, yeah. So the other thing, do you want to move on from the language of this or do you have other?
Is there a formal process for launching this kind of a remedy, not remedy, but, you know, does somebody complain to town hall? Do they have to fill out a form, do they come to you, do they go to the police? Is there any kind of a?
It, it just says that should the enforcement officer identify a violation, which is typically by a complaint that's been received. So the enforcement officer might notice one on their own and be able to enforce it that way. But there's no formal process for someone to submit a complaint. Typically, we ask that it's in writing so that we have some documentation for that. But yeah, there's not a, a policy or anything to be followed. But on that note, I think there are a couple of policy related things like for when the enforcement officer can justify that it does constitute these things. It can, in, in an internal policy, be able to lay out a little bit more criteria about how someone can administer this without being subjective. And then the other part that I think gets complicated is the, the processes to follow in terms of recording liens and who manages that. And dealing with the, the legal process, getting that going with the attorney. So where I don't think that this ordinance is the place to sort of spell out all those steps and things like that. There might be a little bit more behind the scenes to administer this more functionally. And then the, I think the other major thing is funding. So the town is saying that we will go in and clean up a property if, if they put a lien on it, it's been more than 30 days, they're not complying. The town has the ability to do that. Or they have the ability to pay for a dumpster to be placed on the property to help them to clean up, stuff like that. There's no, there's no line item in our budget for, for enforcement for that. So just another sort of future question.
So what does that look like? You've got, you've got a property that needs a dumpster as long as these tables and as wide as the hallway. And it's been that way for several years, let's say. What are we going to do? We're going to go drop a dumpster on their property and pick it up ourselves?
Potentially. If the process that, we go through the process and they're not voluntarily working with us, that's, that's one. So that, that example comes from talking with Tom Marsh, the town manager at Windsor, who says that they've had a lot more success by sort of cooperating, say, hey, we'll pay for the dumpster, you do the work and clean it up. And then someone says, okay, as opposed to clean up your property and they don't know where to start or whatever. So that's just an example from what he said that they've had success with. And it's cheaper to get the dumpster than it is to take them to court.
I need to do that.
I, I'm just looking for, you know, what is, you know, when you show up on this person's property with, you know, you, you've told them they're coming, that you're coming. And you've got a dumpster and you're going to back it into their yard, you're going to drop it on their property. You don't see a problem with that?
So the, you're, you're asking how does that get funded? So, so the cost, the cost to abate the nuisance is on the landowner.
Well, I, I understand that. I'm just worried about if I, if I was driving that truck with that, with, with that, uh, thing on it, what kind of reception I might have on this property.
They're having overdrive, let it go.
You, you know, I mean.
Apparently this works in Windsor.
And that's, so that's a cooperative solution, so we wouldn't necessarily do that. That would be the, the way we go about it if someone is not cooperative.
Well, would that be good? Because you still want the nuisance. So what does it look, if they're?
No, I think, then I think you have to go to court. You can seek an injunction from the, from the judge. I don't know, there's, there's a lot of different ways that it could play out. But I think the ordinance does cover those different options.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not necessarily looking for a vote on this at this moment. I'll create a, an updated one, I'll run some things by the attorney.
Well, this is an ordinance that would require three readings anyway.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, have we, have we even done a first?
No.
We're still making it.
So was there anything else that you want me to bring up to the attorney at this time?
I, sorry. The enforcement officer could be you, it could be the health officer, it could be
Town manager.
The town manager. So when it gets down to who's, who files the lien and who's writing the letters, there would need to be some coordination or communication between all of the enforcement officers. If someone decides to take action on a particular case. And I'm sure that doesn't need to be spelled out. And I'm sure that doesn't need to be spelled out, but it's certainly something we would need to be aware of, or you all would need to be aware of, so that.
Yeah.
Somebody's running off doing something, the rest of you probably would like to know about it, so you're not all going after the same thing at the same time.
Definitely. Yeah, well, yeah, that and internal coordination as far as like if the treasurer needs to be involved with, you know, keeping track of the fines that are coming. Um, is that all placed on whoever the enforcement officer is?
And is it the enforcement officer, the one that that files the lien against the property, the enforcement officer sent it to a attorney to have it filed?
Yeah.
Those are some legitimate details that.
So I think this would, this would be nicely accompanied by a policy for administering it.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay.
One other thing I remember from the past is um, when when Stan was here and you you know, somebody. Come in with a zoning complaint with to him, he'd just go out and talk to him first to start, you know, he didn't go out and start writing. Do we need to kind of clarify that in the beginning of this somehow so that, you know, there is a process that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I think that's part of the policy that should go along with it.
Okay.
Um.
Just, you know, I I don't want to just, somebody comes in and says, hey, young so and so's got a mess over there, can we send a letter?
Yeah, yeah, no, okay, so right now, we send a letter that's preliminary to the notice of violation.
Okay.
Um, to just say, we um, we've received a complaint, we want to talk about to see if this is, if there's a valid um violation or not. So yeah, that's that's part of what's ongoing, but yeah, I think that's the place to put it is in the policy for how to use this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Kelly.
Yeah, I'm Rick Mossbeck. I live at forty-two seventy-five Route one thirty-one. You're very familiar with the subject property across the road. And there's no end, I mean, you're the seventh zoning officer since I made a complaint.
Just interrupting, Kelly.
Excuse me, can you pull up and talk at the podium so that everyone, people can't hear you online right up there? Sorry.
It's all right. Steph, uh, he's the seventh zoning officer that's received a complaint from myself and my neighbor. About the property across the road, which is forty-two seventy-eight. It's owned by, it was owned by an Alan Roberts. It's been derelict. No one's lived there for almost two years now. And I understand there's a lien on the property by the town. And he's been, he's not been paying fines that he wanted to, I don't know. He didn't have a starting date for that. So where is there an end date to a complaint? Because this goes back, you mentioned Stan, I've got a list at home of seven officers.
It started with me.
And it started with, I think you, and you didn't want to go out to see him because you said you were afraid of him. And and I, he he, I never had a problem with him personally, but he, I understand you, I understood you.
It did touch himself a lot, and it was Chris Callahan who wrote that original decision or agreement that he had to. Meet certain conditions or he would be in violation and.
Yeah.
I don't know whether that got passed on after I left or not.
Yeah.
My understanding is that um, the insurance company took the property over. And if you call to find out the status of the, they won't give you money because is it, is it in Connecticut? The insurance company's in Connecticut?
I believe so, yeah.
And they won't respond to any uh citizen complaint or. You're you're looking for, uh, I'm just looking for a status update, you know, what's the status of the property? Because there's junk on the property, there has been for years. Occasionally you'll hear something pop off, like there's a barrel exploding or whatever, uh, tires undercover. It, the.
Yeah.
The trailer's been empty since, I think, August of twenty twenty-three. So how do you run an end date for this type of thing? When it goes to court and you have attorneys involved representing the town, Wesfield, and the individual that owns the property. Who I understand doesn't own the property anymore. I don't know what the status update is on. So where do you go from it? Because like you said, there wasn't, somebody put a dumpster on there and some of the stuff was taken away. It was a thirty-yard dumpster. Now people will drive in and get out, look around, they're interested in purchasing the property. There was a noise problem and it was a junk problem for years, years and years, and nothing got done. And nothing is still getting done be- because, because why?
But you you said this is uh uh forty?
Forty-two seventy-eight, there's a mailbox there, somebody comes and picks up.
What road is it? What road is it?
One thirty-one.
One thirty-one, so this is, this is the.
It's right when you go right over the crest of the hill, past the pond.
I'm forty-two, I'm forty-two seventy-five. Bert's property is a big red farmhouse, there's a pond across the road. And then on the next property is a big cedar hedge in front of our house. And and the subject property is right buckle road to me.
Oh, well, okay. Uh, so you're going up the hill.
If you're coming from the, from downers, you're going up the hill, and the big pond's on the right. And his pond is on the right, the property before this pond is.
Okay, now I remember, I could, yeah, you, I remember you writing those, yeah, I remember now. Okay. I was, I was backing on the flat.
No, you're on the, on the uphill, it's almost to the top of a, that uphill, right?
Um, so so Brandon, where's the town with the lien on that? Is that uh something that's possible or are we waiting on this ordinance to do that or?
Yeah, Ryan, do you want to give an update on that?
Well, so we, the. Um, the outstanding fines on the property are, you know, probably over fifteen thousand at this point. Um, and a lien was placed on the property um, a year ago or something. We had talked about foreclosures on the lien. Um, I think the property went to tax sale at one point and um, I I can't remember all the specifics, but basically. After the, the bank paid off whatever fines they owe to the town for the liquid taxes. There's, I guess there's some leftover, I I think that it changed hands, I can't remember all the details. But um, our attorney who was gonna, who was working with us on um, apparently we had a different meaning attorney from our other attorney. Um, but there wasn't much that we could um retain um after the bank closed on it. So that's, that's a status update. I I know that doesn't make perfect sense, because I don't, I don't know how a lien works exactly, but.
The 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 part of confusion on that was i- i- if we had a tax sale. The the value of that lien should have been included in the tax, taxes due for the starting point for the sale of that property. So that the taxes and the penalties were paid.
So it didn't, it it didn't go to tax sale, I believe it was foreclosed on.
Oh, by the bank?
Yes, and we're still working on risks. Once it becomes official, the town is the first lien holder, so we will get.
Okay.
Fine money back.
Right.
Um, we haven't received it yet, but we will provide.
There was, there was some difference between a zoning violation, which runs with the land, and so that zoning violation is still outstanding, depending, no matter who, who owns the property.
Correct.
Um, and somehow it affected how much um we could actually go after the new landowner for.
New landowner being a bank?
Yeah.
I'll research this and and come back to the board with with further information on that.
Um.
Why does it take seven different zoning officers, zoning officers to get involved?
It wasn't the zoning officers, it was, it was tied up in court for a while.
Well, I'm going back to the dirty beginning of the process, we actually come out to my property, they talked to him and um, this was when he was still living there. Okay, he hasn't, I don't, I've heard he's in Hill House, I don't even know where he lives.
So, so so the reason is because the zoning enforcement process isn't very strong, which is so. This property being one, but not the only one, is sort of what's stimulating this conversation about we need better tools to be able to handle it. Um, and so this is kind of the the end road with the zoning violations. You go, you play it out in court and see what happens. Um, but but you just sort of left waiting, there's not that much we can do after, after it says fines are being imposed. You know, normally that stimulates someone to to do stuff, but not always. So that's why we're saying we need to have the right tools to be able to handle these types of nuisances.
Was was there a tax sale at one time? Does anybody know if that ever came up with tax sale?
I don't believe it was in tax sales since I've been here. Are you familiar with?
It had started the process of going into a tax sale.
They know it stopped with the current tax sale, that's what it's like.
And is that process, if a property goes up to a tax sale, is that process um, does the public uh is made aware of that?
Oh, yeah, okay. But it didn't actually officially go, so what we do is initially, when somebody has to liquidate taxes, we try to reach an agreement with them. Um, they come and sit with us in the office, we try to figure out payment arrangement that will bring them current. And if that payment arrangement fails or it's not successful, then we start issuing notices that we're gonna do a tax sale. Um, and we, we mail them all three times, and on the third one, if we haven't heard from them, then it goes in the newspaper. Remedy, we have a tax sale, but in this particular instance, it was cured before it went to tax sale.
It's just ironic, um, Rick's neighbor. We started this many years ago?
Been a long time.
Well, I went after this guy because I happen to have, because he was an old friend who was a private investigator now, having worked for the D U N E. I said, I want this guy investigated because I used to see the little girls like a lot, like that and stuff. I knew there was drugs going in and out, okay? That's when I got hot and heavy on it. So I want this guy out of here. Okay? Going after him personally, I was lucky, but I can't afford to do that, okay? That's obvious, but it's been years since we've been after this guy and nothing has happened. The 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 property, you don't even walk on it. It's so dangerous. It's gonna take twenty thousand dollars to clean that property up, get the garbage off, okay? So somebody needs to put some fire under somebody's butt and better English ass, get things moving, you know? It's it's disgusting. My property has lost value because of it, his property has lost value uh because of it. I would love to buy that piece of property clean enough to make it look like my property looks now. Make make Vermont beautiful, let's go for it, okay? That's what I've got to say.
Thank you, Derek. Feels like I'm at a planning commission here. So um, I understand exactly where everybody's coming from with this type of ordinance here, however, I feel like we're in the wrong place for this discussion. I voiced this before. Um, first of all, this, we're, what are we, an HOA meeting right now? That's what it sounds like here. But also, we need to have these discussions at the boards, where we write these policies, make the bylaws, and go through all of this. The DRB, the planning commission, not muddy up your guys' time, which is valuable, but we should be going over this stuff, which, you know. You guys going over, you know, language edits. We do that all the time. I understand it's fun and riveting, but let our, you know, the boards do their job. If this is something that needs to be addressed, let's do it in the board, in, you know, the commissions that are designed for this stuff here. It also feels like my, you know, one of your favorite sayings, unintended consequences. Yes, I understand that we need to have something here, there are properties around that are nuisances. But the unintended consequences that could come with this, it almost feels like an overreach of like powerful things. Like, when is it at this point that we say there's a problem with something, we're gonna levy fines, we're gonna impose liens and all this stuff? Well, what if there's somebody actually living at this property and having a lot of financial problems or hardships or other things? Then all of a sudden, we're in a situation where somebody's gonna lose their house. Like, we don't want to be the arbiters kicking people out of their property just because it's a mess. Who means that it's a mess? So yes, I understand our problem with this. I'd love to see everything cleaned up and, you know, going all haughty-dory, but we're in the wrong field, the wrong place to be discussing this. This needs to come back to the planning commission or go to us in the first place, not muddy up your guys' time with it. We need to work on the language because I have a whole bunch of stuff right here and we can go over all of it. I'd love to just pick it apart, but we have a whole bunch of time. You know, Ryan, you definitely touched on some of it with the seven days, it's like, okay, cool, so seven days, uh, you gotta get it all done, or we're gonna start coming for your property. But after that, in penalties and costs and other remedies, section B, each day is a separate violation. So every single day, hundred dollars, a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars. I work in construction, you're not gonna get a property cleaned up in thirty days. You're not. I would love to, and if you can, show me these people, I want to hire them, okay? It's just not practical and we're putting up barriers here where people can lose their homes. We gotta think about that, it's the unintended consequence of this. It really needs to go to the planning commission and the DRB to go over all of this. Find something that works so Ryan has the tools to work with to be able to remedy these things. But this right here, as it sits, I don't stand by it. Uh, as a concerned citizen, I think it's a very big overreach as the chair of the planning commission. This needs to come to us. This is where it belongs to go through all this stuff, so we can actually give you that, something that is workable. So you don't have to sit here and remove a semicolon or change around the wording or strike sentences. We do this stuff all the time. So that's my opinion on this. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, well, Joe, i- i- I'm on the planning commission with you. Um, and we probably would come up with the same thirty days, maybe sixty. E- either way, it's not good faith effort in in somebody, they might not get it done in thirty days, but if we see good faith effort and then working on it. I I can't imagine we'd start, you know, okay, you didn't get it done on time, here's your fine, you know?
That's what I'm worried about too, though, is like, say, somebody's starting the process of going through it and they're working on it, but these fines are still adding up. And.
Well, they, no, they, I don't think they would be.
The way this is where they would be.
No, because it starts with your, the initial contact and 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 you've got a problem, and if they, if they get going on it and they start taking care of it. Then we don't send a letter that says, okay, you're now in violation, a hundred dollars a day, okay? You, once that letter goes out, yeah, you're you're, and you know, one of the other thoughts I have, you ever had a car impounded?
That was a quick, no, I've been lucky.
And and even at my shop, if you don't pick it, if you don't pay your bill in two weeks, you know, I don't charge you for the bike to sit there for two weeks, but after two weeks, it's seventy-five bucks a bag. It's not meant to be friendly. It's meant to kick you in the ass and get you jog, get you to come out, pay the bill, pick your bike up. You know, that's, it's, that's, you know, you gotta have some, that's, the purpose of this was to put some teeth into what these gentlemen are talking about.
Yeah, that's definitely a situation.
It 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 is, it is, I I remember it. I was on the planning commission with the forest, was the zoning administrator. I remember when this was going on and started. I I, one of the gentlemen made a comment about their, your property devalued. I I'd like to see.
It's been years, this has not been.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Go ahead.
But where where did you, where did you get the number that your property devaluated? Did the taxes go down?
No, perhaps you can stop by my house and take a look across the road and and then come to your own, like you said, it is subjective, okay? Certainly, but it's not doing anybody at the town any favors.
No, I don't disagree with you on what's what's there. I I understand and I agree with you. I just was asking about, you know, the evidence that your property has been, your property has devalued because of that.
I can't tell you that for a fact, but if if you go on any real estate site, there is a um. Impuded value of your property based on current real estate conditions and.
Correct.
Google Maps takes in the entire area and right across the road is a derelict property with an unoccupied mobile home and outbuildings that are starting to rot away, so.
And I'm sure there are, there are other people like me who will down the road. It took me almost months to find the house up here, but we moved up a floor. If that property was as derelict as it is now, I wouldn't have bought my place. I would have said, no way in hell I'm gonna pay for it, okay? It took a lot, a lot nicer, heck, the people that lived there before, it was no big problem. But I'm sure other people feel the same way. I don't want to live next to a junkyard.
I have to agree with you, and um, when my wife and I bought our house in twenty twenty, we inadvertently found a junkyard, not on our property, close by. So I feel your pain when I, when you're dealing with, for sure. However, where I'm having issues with this is not in your circumstances at all. I I know the property you're talking about, there's definitely issues that need to be addressed down there. And to what Ryan was working on with this, I understand where this is coming from, there needs to be a tool here. However, the way this is. However, the way this is worded, I don't stand by it. I don't agree with the way it is in here, it needs editing and just some fine tuning, that's what we do on these boards. So rather than muck up your guys' time, send it to the planning commission, we'll put it on our next agenda, we'll make it one of our top priorities to go group. We are working on the town plan, but we're picking up the bylaw modifications and stuff like that, too. Uh, we can bring this right in there and kind of get working on this right away, and give you guys a more completed document. That's where I'm kind of sitting with this, and, you know, get input from the D R B, too. They have a lot of insight on what's going on here, I just wanna see us make of the best decision for the town, the taxpayers, and all the residents without, we're always gonna have unintended consequences. But right now, I see it as this is an avenue, if somebody has a property they're living in, they might be disabled, they have hardships, there's all sorts of things on there. This could be a way that somebody could lose their property, it goes to a tax sale, it has a lot of very far-reaching consequences on this, that yes, could be stopped by cleaning things up and never being in the situation in the first place. But I think the teeth on this don't need to be a wolf. Like, this feels predatory. So let's send it to the board, the commissions that work on these things, clean it up, get it together on here, and bring something back to you guys that is a lot more solid, that we can work on, that also had the chance to go through public hearings and go through the whole process.
Andrea's answer is. Andrea?
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Perfect, I just wanted to second and support what Joe said as as a member of the D R B, that it's really important that the select board takes advantage and fully utilizes its committees, and for the purpose that we're there for is to do the legwork and to do this detailed process, because the select board has so much work to do, and yet these meetings are hours long. It makes it limiting for people to sit into the meetings and listen to the meetings because you're working on things that you have committees in order, that are available and tasked to do these agendas, these these specific agenda items, so I would just second and support Joe's that this really is a committee issue that the select board, you will, you get the finished product, and then you get to take it apart, question and ask for details after the planning commission has has gotten the bones of the document together, thank you.
One of the details that I think we stumbled on tonight is a situation where a property goes into tax sale or or foreclosure from a bank or something like that, there might need to be some language in here that addresses how those fines and things are handled through those processes.
Yeah. I'll be researching that, Mike, and I'll get back to you in the next video.
Well, I I, what are we gonna do with this, we're gonna keep it, we're gonna hang on to this here, we're gonna send it down to the committees?
I'm in favor of letting Ryan handle it. If he wants to bring it to other committees for input, that's fine, he's working with the attorney on it, but I would just assume delegate it to Ryan and the town manager to shepherd this through and bring it back to us when they're ready.
I agree with that.
I can say this is the Chair of the Planning Commission, that we'll put it on our next agenda, and we'll get right on it for you, and we can communicate with the D R B to get their input on it as well, so this isn't just sitting here, you know, spitting his wheels in mud, we'll get something going on this stuff, or, and we wanna give you a product that you can actually work with that works for all of the residents of the town, it doesn't, well, minimizes the unintended consequences. You're never gonna eliminate them, unfortunately.
Just bear in mind, it's not a zoning bylaw, it's an ordinance, it's a different animal.
Mm-hmm, right. But where we're running into the original issue, though, is with definitions in the bylaws, correct?
No.
So this is totally
This would be totally separate issue.
This is the board where ordinance belongs.
Now, if we have things where there are like, um, the junkyard, the definitions, stuff like that, there was times where I believe this board said that it was very muddy and was part of the reason why it's being dealt with here. I still stand by that, I think that something of this caliber that brushes very closely with the other committees, we should definitely be going over it and giving all the input of, you know, the other members, that's ten other sets of eyes.
I repeat, I I would designate Ryan and the town manager to shepherd this through, and whoever you wish to consult for input on it, I leave that to you guys.
And we're gonna consult with the town attorney as well, and we'll be in touch. Thank you very much.
Poisonton Field Master Plan, who's who's got this one?
How are you tonight? Oh, okay. Hey, how's it going? Yeah, so we'll operate out soon.
Hi, I'm Julia Delmar, this is Justin Denal Mary Child from the Parks and Recreation Commission. And tonight, we're newly established, we share a key to our completed master plan, but we will be as quick as we can.
Oh, I think I have the wrong slide. I have no one else else. Central Q P C, yours, just a second, we'll have the race lines. That's okay, I can give you, you can probably
Yeah, sure, so, um, early last year, the select board allocated about eleven thousand dollar backup money to go towards improving that poisonton field. As a commission, we decided that the best route for improving Poisonton Field was with a master plan. So, um, over last summer, we got a wetland renovation done and a survey done. In late August, we issued an R F P for the master plan. In October, I came here to a select board meeting and recommended S E Group to award it a bid, which they were in that same meeting, um, the select board voted unanimously to allocate more ARPA money to cover the entire master plan as well as the wetland delineation survey. So in late fall, we got working with S E Group. Um, we did some workshops that were very successful over the winter, and then lots of board meetings and Zoom meetings later at the final master plan in our hands in early May. And we're very happy.
Right, so, um, yeah, as Julia mentioned, um, once we selected the S E Group to work with us, um, developing the master plan, uh, they helped us out by getting together some feedback from the community, uh, that was really important to gather community input into what the community here in Weatherfield wants to see happen, uh, with the Poisonton Field, this is the correct one. Uh, it just appeared like a and, um, so along that lines, what we, uh, what the S E Group helped us to do, uh, is first of all, reach out to the community, so um, there was lots of notice to the community about what was happening with the development of this master plan, reaching out through uh, Facebook, Front Porch Forum, through the town website, uh, at the library. And as we reached out to these, there were three, uh, workshops that were held by the S E Group and also in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, so their first workgroup, uh, workshop was, um, a visioning workshop, and the idea of that visioning workshop was to just gather, kind of brainstorm with the community about what kind of things they would look for in Poisonton Field, um, and try to gather as much information as as we could. Uh, and with that information, for the second workshop, the S E Group, uh, put together three concept plans, um, so taking a look at the current usage of the Poisonton Field and how it's utilized by the community, um, taking some of the main feedbacks from the community, um, about what they wanted to see happen with Poisonton, and they put that into three separate concept plans, um. And then the third visioning, uh, the third workshop was, uh, to take, you know, the reviews from those three concept plans and put it into a finalized, uh, plan incorporating kind of the the highlights of each of those three plans. Um, and so during these, uh, community engagements, the workshops, we had over eighty members of the community that were involved, ranging all different ages, uh, I myself attended prior to being on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, my kids did, um, so we had older folks, younger folks, all ranges from the community, uh, giving their input, and we're, I think, really happy with what, uh, what the S E Group came up with for the final plan. I'm going to the next slide. Um, so some of the community improvements that, you know, community priorities that came out, things like improving the playground, uh, having field improvements, like the soccer field, uh, to utilize for the sports teams in our town, you know, there's not much of a field for, uh, use at the Weatherfield School, parking lot improvements, a walking space, better pavilion, somewhere for the community to gather, um, and have a meeting place, uh, in town. Um, so so those are some of the major things that kind of came out from the community feedback, we can go to the next slide. Um, and so putting all of that together, uh, with the final concept overview, and I'll show you this, and you should, do you think I have the copy of the master plan? Uh, you should be able to look at the the final copy of the master plan, so some of the major features of it is um, a U twelve soccer, so it's a youth-sized soccer field, um, so rotating and fixing the field uh, so that it can be better utilized by the sports teams in the town, uh, expanding the playground, adding some nature play elements, adding, uh, and or improving the, uh, pavilion, and adding a an informal amphitheater with the natural hill space that's, uh, that's there at the park. Um, adding a walking loop with a boardwalk going over the wetland area, um, with some interpretive signage, uh, options as well. Uh, some of the other interesting things that came out of the community directly is the idea to add a community porter, um, and then also utilizing the stormwater areas for stormwater gardens. Um, and then also just improving the, uh, restroom area with a covered restroom and some storage, uh, for the park, um, as well as adding ADA accessible paths and features. Next slide, and so here's a map, uh, showing the final, uh, final concept plan. Um, so you can see the rotated from what's currently there now is a, uh, baseball field. Um, there's a kind of rotated, uh, multipurpose field that could be used for, um, soccer or other sports. Um, you can see that the parking lot that exists now, that's a little bit further setback from the road, is kind of moved forward, um, and simplified, adding more parking, making the flow easier in and out. Uh, there's the existing basketball court, um, which is being shown here as a uh, flexible court and ice rink, but perhaps for the for the winter season, um, is kind of moved to the front, closer to the parking lot. There's an optional, uh, additional pavilion added closer to the playground area. Um, so see, these are some of the major features that, uh, that came directly from the community feedback and and went into the final master plan. Next slide. Um, so one of the things that we talked to, uh, with the S E Group, um, about doing is breaking up this plan into, uh, separate phases. Uh, the reason for doing this is that, um, it helps us to, you know, seek funding on a rolling basis, if we wanted get funding to do this project, uh, that we can kind of take it bite by bite, uh, but also break it up into a way where these, you know, different elements of the um, improvements to the Poisonton Field can be done, uh, without impacting each other. Um, so you can see the three main phases are, the first one, which is is, uh, was pretty important to a lot of people, was improving the field, uh, but also improving the parking lot area to make more room for for having a full-size field there. Uh, the second phase is to work on the, uh, the walkway, um, the, uh, amphitheater area and the, um, as well as the play, oh, sorry, the playground is the third area, so the third area is the, the third phase is the nature play and playground, uh, improvements, and a walking loop going through the back of the, uh, to the back of the field. Okay, next slide. No, Andrew, but I'm married.
So, this is the opinion of cost that the S E Group provided for us, as you can see, it's broken up into phases, um, and we did include information about what the permits would cost. We're going to the next slide, we can talk about how we paid for it. So approving this plan will allow us to apply for grants and other financial assistance. Um, there are many community development and nature conservation organizations that we can work with that we can apply for to help fund this project. Um, also, to approve this plan means we're providing opportunities for the community um, to do some volunteer labor, um, we can also work with, um, local businesses, nonprofits, donors to suit funding as well. So why adopt this plan? Um, well, we already paid for the development of it, and we're pretty excited with the outcome. Um, it's in the town plan to improve the Poisonton Field, um, and we had a really great community turnout, as Justin was talking about, so this plan really does reflect, uh, the wants and needs of this community. Um, and also it's a diverse expression of what the community wants, so it's not just little kids like to play soccer, it's not just a specific part of the community, it really is, it addresses everyone's need, um, walking paths for people that maybe don't have um, less place to walk on their roads, things like that, so it's, it's a vast, um, that is a diverse set of opportunities. Um, to approve this plan also means that we can apply for those grants that I just talked about, um, and it also demonstrates the town's commitment to enhancing the quality of life. I think that's the last one. Any questions for us? And about this plan?
What what's the process here, please? I'm I'm not really sure what the process is here, but I don't want that question.
We need some, I would say the process is to discuss this and then have a couple of meetings about it, maybe a public meeting with the select board that we advertise, if you guys wish.
That sounds good. I, is the end goal to have formal adoption by responding?
Yes, I mean, that's what they need in order to apply for grants and so forth.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so I would just point out that, you know, we showed some numbers on the slide. Um, that is, those are numbers that were provided by, uh, the S E Group as an opinion of cost, so they reflect kind of inflated view of, you know, a high value of what we could get if we did everything in the plan. Um, we did keep some optional elements in the plan, just because if we are going to seek grants and funding and things like that, um, if we have them in the plan, it makes it easier to get that. But if we don't, we can choose not to do it. Um, so it's not a commitment to do everything that's in this plan, if you adopt the plan, but it gives us, uh, opportunities to do those things.
I understand.
So that's why, yeah, I just wanna use, no, you know, that's not, we're not asking, you know, the town to cover that money, um, we, as a commission, find to go out and seek the funding and and try to figure out a way to do this, um, you know, to get as much of this done as we can so that we can benefit uh, as many people as possible.
Or else we should go on a public hearing, maybe that should be the next step.
Yeah, it's not like, you can, you want a public, yeah, you know? We'll go on a more public hearing, so that the public can be invited and ask questions. What is your question? Uh, what is your question? Well, I I don't know if my question should be for this or if they should wait for the public. Yeah.
I'm very unsuspense, anyone can.
I'm unsuspense, I don't know much.
Are you guys okay with presenting again on a public hearing that we advertise and?
Yeah, I think that's fine, I mean, we, you know, um, obviously we want the community to be aware of this, that's how we're gonna get the word out about it. Um, we have had the hearings prior to the final master plan being developed and people getting to see the concepts, um, but yeah, we do wanna get the word out to the town about this final master plan and get people excited and interested about it.
Mike? Here it goes.
Um, so, um, no, just, uh, just to put this stuff out there, uh, according to the funding amounts, um, av- available, uh, from grants, I believe, uh, I see maximum, uh, funding, uh, available of two million, ten thousand dollars. That's maximum allowed, and and if you go to the big one, which is like third from the bottom on the second page of that, um, L W C F grant, recreational facilities is twenty-five to one million dollars. But it, but it also requires a fifty percent match. So if you get five hundred thousand, you're in for five hundred thousand, you get a million, you're in for a move. You know, things to consider, um, I I was listening also to what you were saying about, uh, of a, um, what, a town meeting or whatever you want, a public hearing, um, yeah. Uh, that's a good idea.
And Mike, grants, you know, prior to this, I was a, a grant writer, and grants can be, you can use other grants for matching funds as well.
Okay.
For creative like this, and we get enough public input, I think what they need is is to get that public input from us and then also to approve the plan, so that they can apply for the grants.
Yeah, and how how will we, um, like, the grant process work for, um, I mean, we, I've been through a lot of great processes, but this might be, it seems like it might be a little different because we there's a lot to this, a lot of steps and a lot of phases, I guess, possibly a lot of different sources. There's a lot to this, a lot of steps and a lot of phases, I guess, possibly a lot of different sources. It would be looking at. So how would we, I guess my question is how would we line up the grants so that we know what to go to the people for, for them? Any remaining funds that we may need.
So when we look at when these, these grants are released and when the graph applications are new, and then we try to be creative with. You know, applying for the grants and, and so forth. We do have. Some reserve accounts that we could potentially use, but I know there's a ton of opportunity out there. We've done stuff like. I did stuff like this up in Palm River in Denver. We got a hundred percent fundraising projects like this.
I, I, I support this thing. I just want to make sure we got it, that's a rule moving forward. That's all.
Yeah, I'm awesome. I'll wait for Mike to finish.
Just one quick question. Um. There is a deadline for approving the master plan to pay. The insuring firm or are they already paid?
They're already done.
Okay, thank you.
That was all taken forward by.
Yeah, I didn't know if they were waiting for an answer as to whether or not the master plan is accepted, like to do a soft shed or to get paid. I, I didn't know, the same situation.
Maybe I do need to ask a question. This is a big one. What happens? When you, you say you're doing it, bite, bite, bite. I'm gonna say what your exact words were, bite, bite, bite. What happens if the whole thing just goes to hell and you don't have money? And we get half of it done. And it's nonusable because we haven't finished it. So what happens then?
I think you.
I'm just saying, what if? The government, we don't know with the government, we don't know what's happening with the monies.
Strategic with the projects that you take on first, and your highest priorities first, and then you, you go from there. Are there any grant deadlines? That are like upcoming grant deadlines that we need to meet? That you're aware of?
No, we haven't been around that. We haven't looked that far into it.
And don't you say it's coming out of our pocket?
Just so you understand, every phase is designed independently of each other. So if you get enough money to do the first phase, go ahead and do it. And if you can't do it three, you end up with a field, a new parking lot, the stormwater. You don't have the walking path, you don't have the extra pavilion. So everything's designed to be independent of each other. So you don't end up. Like digging up the first phase, put it in second. I mean, ultimately you get all the money at once and you save a lot of money because you do it all at once. You're not backing up a little bit to do the next phase. But that's. The phasing was designed to ease the pain, allow our time for grants, fundraising. Support from the town. You, you don't notice, no? A group of people, twenty people could walk in and sign a petition and say, put it on the. Devote to the whole thing and get it won. We don't know, we're not saying it's gonna happen. We never know. It could, or you could have somebody donate money or you could get a grant. But out of this plan, we could do nothing.
This, this board could actually vote to ask for, for a, a long vote.
Not that I'm suggesting that, I'm just saying that. It could all happen at once. You could save money, you could find a bigger grant. We haven't even done the research really yet for all the grants. We have a preliminary list, but. Once the master plan is here, then you start fundraising and really. Chew on it and get it, get us going.
And don't we, don't, did we, did we take the time to think about the future? Who's gonna upkeep it? Where, where are the funds gonna come from? I mean, it's not, you're talking a big property now. It's, it's not gonna be a small thing because you're gonna have. The ice rink, is the ice rink gonna be a pickleball court as well? If, if I remember correctly?
Just to clarify, let's go through some of the options. There's supposed to be a basketball court and you're gonna be able to play pickleball on it. If there's a group of people in town that really want an ice skating rink, if they want to do the fundraising, they want to do the work on it and have a ice skating club. And they'll be able to do that on that court. It's not something the town's looking to. Try to do like we did before where the fire department's flooding it, we're maintaining it, we're keeping it clean. We really want community involvement and grassroots organization on this project. If the group wants to do pickleball, then they would be responsible for maintaining that and helping out.
Can I just make two silly points? One, our request for a public hearing, our suggestion for a public hearing is not a commentary on the amount of public input you got on this already. It's more a formality. It adds. More credibility to this board approving or adopting the plan, which I'm sure is gonna be the outcome, if I can say that, but. It just isn't a commentary on your process. I hope you don't take it that way. Secondly, in-kind labor. Can also be used as match. It doesn't always have to be cash, so. You always have that option.
Right.
Kelly, so I've been working with the group since the technical advisor from the most senior for three years and having done a number of these projects. You hit on one of my favorite topics, which is maintenance. You know, we designed, over forty years, I designed and built many. Projects and the one thing that we always lacking that we learned was maintenance. So part of the grant application, my suggestion to the commission was that there's a line of maintenance in whatever. So if they apply for a five hundred thousand dollar grant, we take a percentage of that and that goes into a maintenance fund. In perpetuity, because that's a very important thing. You're gonna spend.
You know, millions of dollars to do something that you don't have any money to upkeep it.
And that's, that's a very, you hit on one of my favorite topics and. I think that that is part of the grant application. As we work through this thing as a team, we need to keep cognizant of that. And I've brought that up from the beginning, saying it's a great design, but if you can't maintain it. So I think that was, thank you for mentioning that.
And, and did we? Or did the? Did the contractors determine what the ongoing maintenance costs would be?
No.
Why do we hardly maintain the fail?
Yeah.
So I wonder how much more it would cost to maintain it.
So essentially it's gonna be a grassy field with additional amenities, or additional amenities. You're gonna have. Amphitheater, you're gonna have more pavilions, benches, you're gonna have a building that's gonna hide the porta potties. So yes, those things would be maintenance. And I always used to assign of a project like this about a three to five percent. Value number of the built cost as sort of a future maintenance. Stick it in the bank budget. And, and I think as far as, you know, you will be in buying labor, garden bumping, things like that.
Volunteers, sure.
You know, the maintenance is, it's a big deal.
And the only way that this would be success is with grassroots organization, community involvement. This is a community project. This is something that. We want the town to just build it and hope people buy into it. We want them to buy in right from the get-go. They've already had quite a bit of turnout for the design. We want that to keep going and that's the only way to succeed.
So hopefully it packs a role for the public hearing.
Yeah. And that could pack the roots in the end, so we can make it. Yeah, I, we actually, there was quite a number of people who showed up when we were receiving the ARPA. Funding. I was one of those people. There's probably thirty. People who came just for that. And so, yeah, we do get a lot of people turning forward. I think we will.
And so that we can be prepared, what can we expect at a public hearing?
Same thing we're doing here. You're gonna present and then it's gonna be open to people to ask questions.
You guys wanna set a date? Now? And then you can go ahead and advertise it?
Yeah. Second meeting in July? Is that too long away for you guys? I'm not sure we can warn it for the next.
Yeah, it takes thirty. Typically, we do it every day. Yeah.
One, one consideration on that. Is July is, July and August is a. Vacation, they're vacation months.
Yeah, vacations.
I just want, I, I, I want as many people as possible.
Thought August would be a better.
You know.
I just don't want these people waiting to name the rest.
I, I know either, but I want them to have good support too.
How many public hearings will there be? Just one, oh, just one, just one.
Can you, can you guys send like, maybe a Google list of the options for a date? Then we can check our calendars and see what we've got going on. A lot of vacations and stuff going on for people. I want to make sure we have all people here and three ten.
I would say July twenty eighth, August eleventh, or August twenty fifth. Those are three options.
What, what's that, what's the last one?
Uh, August twenty fifth.
Is that a regular meeting for us as you're looking, that you're looking at?
Yeah, those are.
Do we want to do that as a regular meeting or do we want to pull that out and just do it as a special meeting on a separate night? And just dedicate that night to one issue of this topic?
So you guys.
I, I don't have a problem doing an, an extra meeting to do that. I, I think it makes more sense to focus. Cause, cause we can get like earlier, we can get bound up on, on a hearing of this nature.
Yeah.
For an hour, hour and a half. And that, that's really gonna mess up a regular meeting.
And we don't want to rush this.
I know, I don't, I don't.
That's a good point. We could do it as.
You do, you do it on a weekend or whatever too, in February. A lot of families out there that are busy during the week.
Those become tougher for me, but that's okay. I, I guess, I mean, as far as you're concerned, it's probably not much I need there. Honestly, at this point.
You have any questions? Send it in if you'd like.
I shouldn't say it, actually, because you never know, the public can come in and say, what? And then you gotta kind of listen to them. Even though I support it, if they don't, I mean, that's what representative government is.
I'd say sometime in August. I don't care when in August.
I, 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 I don't either for the most part. Thursday, Thursday night's about the only night that tends to get difficult for me. And obviously my Mondays are pretty well spoken. But other than that, I'm.
Okay, I need it.
Okay. Can, can we, can we get back to you on a date on that? Okay. That all right? Can I, yeah?
Yeah, it's fair enough. We don't have to do that setup tonight.
Okay.
So I don't have to.
Just boost the research and get it together.
Yeah, and we can, you know, the best we can do is coordinate, because we can coordinate dates and schedules.
Uh, my question was sort of what Kelly and Brian talked about, about, about the maintenance cost. And, and I was looking at this and in my mind, I was thinking, well, it doesn't look like it changes a lot of what we're doing now over there, maybe a little. It does a little bit, Mike. I mean, what, what's the answer to that? You're gonna have. Instead of one pavilion, you're gonna have three. You're gonna have another building there that's gonna hide the porta potties, the storage building. If there's gonna be a, a multi-purpose court, somebody's gonna need to sweep it and take care of it. There's gonna be additional plant material that may require beyond like a garden club, this is all we need to do. I don't think, I think you're correct in your assumption that it's not gonna be much more than cutting a lot of grass. And there's gonna be more areas to trim like the boardwalk that goes around the weapons. So it's gonna add another layer to it. I don't think it's gonna quadruple what's going on out there, but certainly there is gonna be more. But, but, but you said three to five percent, and if I look at a two million dollar project, three percent is sixty thousand dollars. Yep. And we already have something going on and we're adding, we're adding to it, so it's not a full sixty thousand that I think needs to be implemented.
Yeah.
Well, I always add that to perpetuity. You stick it away in an account that the town manager takes care of it and you draw from it.
It's not happens.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at backing out the, the current cost from the sixty thousand to start with.
I would say, I thought we would get that. Hopefully five thousand a year is what we spend out for the endsuit and then file and everything to maintain it. So it's not, it's not too much.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think it's gonna be sixty thousand dollars a year. But what I'm doing is for future, you know, if a building needs to, pavilion needs repaired, we need to spend twenty thousand dollars. Be nice to have a fund stuck away that we don't have to come here and ask for. And say, we have it in reserve, we can fix the roof or a piece of playground that needs to be refurbished. That would actually be, that would be a totally separate issue from all of this though, because we'd have to go to the voters to establish the reserve account in the first place. To do that. Yeah, but I mean, it's something we really should think about. We're gonna do this project. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, but this is a whole great discussion about the. The maintenance almost becomes as important as the design of the project. Great. No, you're right. I, I hear you. Okay.
Well, I think this is very exciting. We think it's well worth investing in, it's great amenity and I'm very excited about it.
Thank you. Thank you for your.
Great, really, I just want to thank Ryan, taking their three years of, of volunteering to help us out. He's been invaluable to this project and these guys, the energy that they brought to this.
Let's actually believe it. Let's say we're gonna use it.
I'm just saying. I just want to thank the, the whole committee, the energy they put into this and the thought and just the. All their knowledge combined. They have a really good core team and. I think we're fortunate to have this group in town.
Well done. Yep. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
We, we advertised an R and B for this project and did stay back. They received five bids. The low bidder is Black and Tan Construction, the thirteen thousand, I think they're at ten dollars. We are requesting. Money from the reserve account to do this project. There'll be some additional costs beyond. The thirteen thousand for us being to spend up to twenty. That's not saying that we're gonna spend a whole twenty, but that we have enough money up to twenty to complete the project we need.
I have a question. Since we don't have the bid sheets, can you explain how this bid is so much lower? I know it's one of the differences, a substantial difference.
They're, they've. Some people want to make a lot of money. The bids range, this is typical. You'll have, you'll have a person that bids. To do a job. You have people that bid because they're busy, but if I throw a high number out there and they give you the job, I'll take it. We've had ranges from a hundred thousand to two hundred eighty thousand on, on stuff. This project is. You know, ninety percent of materials we already own. We're basically gonna get an excavator. They're gonna cut the trees. They're gonna build the road that we can drive in on. We're gonna do all the trucking. Some of the other companies. I, I don't know where it came in that high myself. I was really shocked at some of the costs. Twenty-six, I was thinking between. The whole time, I was thinking between fifteen and twenty-five, depending on how much we could provide for labor and work. The cushion on materials is, these are all estimates plus the whole thing getting a little bigger. So some of these estimates might be off. Might not have enough in the stockpile for the fill or the rock. There is gonna be some product we're gonna have to buy and bring in. I'm not gonna use our trucks for material bigger than eight inch stone. If we need one inch, two inch stone in this shop, which we do. I'm gonna hire the truck to come in from either Saint Pierre or another company that has trucking from their pit. They're gonna haul it because their trucks are meant for that. Ours are standing bodies. They're a lot thinner. They're not meant for hauling big rock. Eight inches is like the maximum for it. So I don't know. I don't know because the person, the town resident, I don't know if. I don't know the scenario. I know they did the mowing bid. There's one person that's always slower and I don't know how or why.
And it boils down to the contract too. So before we. We release the work to begin, we sign a contract. And that contract spells out the payment arrangement. So. Until the work is completed, we don't release any funds.
Have we done, has this company just done stuff for us before, this type of work before?
Black and Tan Construction.
Yes, they do also do a lot of site work.
Can you name some projects that they've done for? Can you name some projects that they have done?
He's done a lot of private work with driveway culverts and other things like that. He's done repair at house sites, stream stabilization. Uh, this isn't really out of his field house, sort of kind of work we're doing.
I don't mean to be disrespectful, but putting in a driveway culvert and stabilizing this situation are light years apart from each other. This is a big project.
It's not much different than stabilizing a bank at a house site. It's, it's not wholly a comp, wholly complicated. That's why I was shocked by how high the price of payment at, some of them.
So you're, you're comfortable with this?
I'm very comfortable in doing the work.
He's insured, how much stuff the way it's supposed to be?
True.
How, how, this labeling on the bid tabulation sheet, I don't understand the headings.
Yeah, so these are the, these are the physical days. And then passing down, yeah.
Well, it doesn't, this is the tabulation sheet, which is great. That's really what I'd like to look at.
Yeah.
But I don't know who's, I don't know who company one, company two, company three.
Yeah, we didn't release the actual companies, but these are the actual, these are the companies here that.
I just want to see where the difference is, that's all.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you being thorough.
I'm ready to go.
This. The, the bid looks complicated. The project looks complicated. It, it really isn't. Once you establish the road, it cuts your trees. It, it's not a wholly complicated project. It's just, I can't do it with an excavator. It, it's too big for our machine to get down in there and do.
Okay, tree remover.
I just, excuse me, that's just recommended by the chair. Uh, we follow policy on this? Right? Good policy and all of that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Highway Superintendent's in support of the low bid. Make a motion. Make a motion to award a bid to Black and Tan Construction LLC with thirteen. Uh, up to.
Twenty.
Twenty thousand dollars. Um, to be paid from the Highway Capital Maintenance Improvements Reserve Account. For the repair at Owen Hill Culvert Slope Repair Project.
Second.
Any discussion? Ales in favor?
Aye.
Any extension? Any names? Who carries?
Is that, does that cover the motion for coming out of the reserve?
Yes, yes.
Little, ah, where are you going?
Um, just a few years.
Little Scotty Bridge Repair with the gate on one. And so don't be in a hurry there.
So we followed the same process on this project, uh, this is a, yeah, this is a much longer project. This is from the July twenty twenty-three funds. This project was being made for through LEVA funds, the low bidder was two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. However, after the bid opening, bidder two changed their bid and increased it by thirty-one thousand dollars. So bidder two is now three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. That took place after the agenda had already been posted, so when you read this, I don't even have much information, other than that at the time. Uh, we know with the engineer, uh, Ray and I discussed it, and, um, Ray did check the references, he contacted the contractor. You're comfortable with.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I, I questioned the bidder, I contacted several references, um. One of the references even told me about five people he called to hire the same person. Um, it all came back clean, they stayed in budget, they are respectable, high quality work. Um, if, if, I've never worked with a person personally, so I really checked a lot of the references to make sure. Um, I didn't really negative at all from all the people I've talked to. I guess the one thing that really stuck out was the gentleman I talked to today volunteered that he called five different people himself. And all of those people who I had no idea who they were, he, he said he found nothing. And he's in the middle of the project right now, with him, so far, we're still on grades on project, and has not had any issues. And the people I looked, talked to, they're very good, project's completed, as he stayed on project, he had a lot of value in the book, he's also an engineer. And he made suggestions that they use and utilize to make the project even more successful. Um, by working with the engineer that they had designed the project they were working on, so they were very impressed with them.
Mike, what was that number, bringing in three hundred and eighteen, what?
Three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars.
Even?
Yeah.
Okay, first question. Um, this person had no knowledge of any of the bids that were received.
The bid opening sheet was distributed to everyone, and then he changed his bid. And increased it by fifty percent of the difference.
What was the reason for that, that was stated?
Um, he stated that, uh, he, and I quote, "I had my wife put the bid together for this project from my hospital bed. She forgot to include one of the non-white item prices I had for excavation under the bridge, that number is thirty-one thousand. I need to include it as it is a big part of the job. If you need to reject my qualifying bid, that is fine, it is perfectly legal to waive those. But I reiterate that a stamp diversion plan from moving in the existing alignment should be considered. Our proposal will guarantee a better and safer job, hope to work together, but if not, hopefully I bid on one of your projects while out of the hospital." So, like I said, we did, we did discuss this internally, Ray did check the references, I'm comfortable with moving forward. I think the contract is what holds projects on course. Um, it is still thirty-one thousand cheaper than the highest bidder. Um, and this is FEMA funds.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable taking your recommendation based on that information. Um, but I want you to note somewhere on this, that if he bids on another job and this happens again?
Absolutely.
We, I got a problem with that.
And that was one of the questions I asked of the references, and they had, nobody had any issues with him changing bids or having increases or anything like that.
Who's in the hospital, something got overlooked, it happens.
I would like to say, take it at face value, and.
Yes.
He could've, he could've not said anything, and he could've got the project underway and then said, oh, I need to do a price change because this part isn't done.
That's right.
My, my only concern is, does bidder number one have any grounds for legal action?
Nope.
In this situation?
So we do put a clause in the RFVs that allows us to negotiate with bidders, and, um, I can pull that up actually, so you can see the light.
Was that implied in this situation where the bids were made known and one of the bidder, I mean, in this case, he was already the lowest bidder, and he still is the lowest bidder?
Yeah.
It's a little more clear that that's not a problem, but I'm just concerned that bidder number one can come back and say, we didn't follow the process.
Yeah, I think it'd be totally different if this bid exceeded the other bid, and then we award the other bid, um.
I don't think I would, I, I wouldn't listen to that myself. Or, or if a high bidder came down below the low bidder.
Yeah, like right, under the threshold, but it is, it does seem, like I said, we talked to the engineer, the engineer agrees, Ray and I agree. Preferences were checked all morning, um, so, and we do have the funds to do it, so.
John, for the same sentence.
Oh, question, um, this regarding the FEMA funding. Uh, have we been reimbursed for the FEMA money for the bridge?
Yes, um, so.
Hundred percent?
Yes.
Okay.
That's in the manager's, that's in the manager's report, so you have to wait for that.
Okay. I, I'm really concerned depending on FEMA money at this point with the government that is talking.
It's in the bank.
Sorry?
It's in our banking account.
All, all funds that have been, uh, given to the state.
So we've already received the money for this property?
We've seen FEMA signed off almost six months ago.
Okay, well, the money's emergency management.
Okay, so it is a future market, then?
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
We have the money.
Good.
Yeah, they'll give us, they'll give us.
Uh, make a motion to, uh, let me see, where do I see the, bidder, bidder number two named?
Are we allowed to get names?
Sorry, uh.
It is.
Michelle.
Oh, compared to engineering, is that who's doing the?
That's the engineer.
Design consultant.
All right, you ready for this, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna write it, so go slow.
M U C H E L L E, space, B A I L L A R G, uh, G E O N. Construction Services LLC.
So that, that last name is B E A L I L, uh, B E A I L L.
Sorry, I was.
B E A L L, A I G A O N.
It's like the, the large, the large one, large one. Michelle Bellargum.
Bellargum.
Yeah.
A guy.
Is there an R in there or no?
No. Bellargum.
Bellargum.
Argeron, Bellargum.
M U C H or M I C H?
Uh, A I G A O N.
No, the first name.
Michelle. Michelle.
Mushia.
E L. Oh, Mu- Mushia, yes, M U, M U C H, yeah, Mushia.
Construction.
Yep.
What?
Construction what?
Services LLC.
Good luck with that one.
I got it, I did. Um, we have the, we'll have the correct spelling and writing in, even if I mess up the, the enunciation. Uh, and the bid amount would be thirty, three hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. And this is for the Little Scotty Bridge, okay, so, come back here. I make a motion to award the bid to bidder number two.
Now you know why we showed out who.
Look, I just want, I just want to stick that in there. Mushia. Uh, okay, something butter?
Bellargum.
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 Bellargum Construction LLC.
Services.
Ser- Services LLC, thank you. Uh, for three hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, I think I said this was for the Little Scotty Bridge Flood Repair Project. Um, is there anything else that needs to be done? That, that is, uh, uh, that, that is paid by, uh, FEMA funds already received.
Yep, yep.
Okay, that work?
Second. Ales, any, ales, any discussion? No?
I was just gonna clarify, we don't hardly deceive you folks by saying bidder one, two, or three. If you look at the bid form, there's not a lot of space to write all these names, so we write one on the end goal. At the first bidder, and second bidder, and the third bidder, just so we can say it's bidder one, two, or three, it's not trying to keep the names out of this. Which is, that name especially is, and that's.
bidder number one.
Uh, I think it's, there was ours and this company.
Oh, ours, okay. I guess that's it for discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The extensions, motion carries. Town Forest Access, oh, no, purchasing policy third reading, almost missed that one. We wanted that one done.
Going on, gang? Did I?
This is the final reading of the purchasing policy, we're going to affect that in this reading. We have a motion to accept the, uh, third reading of the purchasing policy.
Awesome.
Okay. Any discussion? Doesn't change since the last time, Ray?
Nope.
Yes, ales in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Town Forest Access.
Yes.
Before, she wanted this on the agenda, I wanted to know what happened to it, what, what's the status on it?
We lost it.
Well, um, the property was going to tax sale. Excuse me, I laid, laid back up. Actually, I think you were, were, were you? Were you taking, this is the time when all that happened? But the other property back in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one.
I mean, yeah, probably.
So the board voted to. There wasn't agreement in place from two thousand and fourteen, the board voted to send the property to tax sale and to void the agreement. Prior to the tax sale, all of the taxes were paid in full. Um, and. It's basically what happened, so the agreement is void, and.
Well, there was, there was a great deal of work done on creating a parking lot, the plan was to create a parking lot on the opposite side of the road.
Yeah, but they didn't fill their part in the agreement, that's why Mrs. Abbott.
Neither party.
Yeah.
And then there was supposed to be, there, there was a wetlands crossing.
Yep.
In order for the trail to get up to the, to the forest.
That's.
So a lot of work went into it, but it seems to have just stalled.
The resident also didn't like, because that trail went right by her window, and.
It was put as far away from her.
Yeah.
The house as we could, if I recall correctly, that's where we ended up with the wetland crossing issue, and.
And it only, we made it to the Johnson's property, so there's another piece of narrow property in between Abbott and the town forest.
Yep, and I thought that had been resolved, of course Charlie's gone now, and.
Yeah, Charlie's gone, and then Terry owns the property, and I, I did talk to Terry and her son, her son. Uh, and they were in agreement that they would give us an easement through the property.
Okay.
If we waived the taxes of the property, which are like, believe, twenty or thirty bucks a year. It's a landlocked piece of property that has their water source on it.
Yeah.
Um, so what would be required at this point is for us to work with Abbott. If we wanna use that access point to access the town forest and get an easement through the Johnsons. Or, there's another option as well that may be fruitful, um, whatever.
What other options are?
So you got a, you got a new executive session for that?
I, oh, no.
You don't need to use any, is there an alternate?
There's another property that, that may be willing to provide access, maybe, according to Mr. Bullen.
Very.
I, I'm not done.
Good, okay.
The parking lot across the road?
We would have, we would have to, that's, that's Abbott's property.
I know.
So we would have to put money into that, and, and she would have to be a willing seller, and sell it to the town. Um, as well as.
Did we have it surveyed or something?
It's two acres, it was, I, I believe it's a two acre parcel of land across the street.
I thought we had done more than just talked about it, I thought we had invested in a survey or, and I could be wrong.
I believe there was some investments in the property that was legal, there was surveying, I think the town was in it twenty or thirty thousand.
There was a purchase agreement.
Yeah, there was a purchase agreement.
Yeah. I thought we got.
I, I think that, did that all go away, though?
It did.
Yeah.
All the taxes were paid in full.
Yeah.
So that was part of the trade-off for the taxes.
Well, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was.
And I believe the taxes reached like one ten.
Yeah, yeah.
What's on?
See, this thing sat from like, what was it?
Oh, Larry.
Two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
Or something.
I think it started.
I'm throwing my, I was happy, that's why I never did it.
That's why they got some.
That's why we got so far behind.
Yeah.
So, I guess the question is, are, are we gonna pursue access to the town forest or not? And the only way we can get in there now is from the state park side.
Yes, and some believe that's a viable option, and some don't, like I've heard mixed failings about this in the community. Like, the state park entrance is only right down the street, that's where I access it when it's.
Yeah, straight around the bend.
Yeah, I mean, actually, Tyler and I parked here, and we biked to the state park entrance. I think it only takes us ten minutes, um, but if we want an access point in that, on that side of the trail system, then we have two options. To work with Emily Abbott and get a needed easement through her property, and then a needed easement through the Johnson's property. One of the other options, I think, there, man.
And is there any energy to do that?
I have energy to do it.
I hate to say this, but that was the problem, we got this, we got this property, but we don't have access to it from our own community. It is our own town forest, and we don't have access in our own community.
It would be nice to have a parking lot and have a trail access point in this town.
I, I, I.
It is a different.
Good.
Yeah, I envisioned, which I know I came in much later, but I envisioned, um, parking lot like the one in Woodstock. At their access point where you can park and then bike up to the lake on the right. You guys spin over there. It's really, it, it, it's not very, it's not a huge expense to build. It's just a dirt parking lot with a, with a sign that shows the trail system.
But doesn't the trail connect directly to the parking lot? Where, in this case, the, the, the one that, what the forest was talking about is actually on the other side of the road, to start with. But, but now, isn't there a fellow's property out there as well?
That's, the fellow's property was what became the town forests.
Oh, oh, okay.
And she will do it to, to the town.
I think I sold her snowmobiles when we were, uh, doing, doing the, uh, the snowmobile club, because she called, we had wanted it closed. And I, I spent about four hours on the phone and went out to see her, and we ended up keeping the trail.
This has been controversial, like, you know, there's different boards that want different things, so I just, if this board wants me to pursue it, I will. But I just wanna make sure everyone's on board before we put.
I, 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 I'm gonna say something about that whole process with that board. I don't think that it was a matter of not wanting access to the forest, it was a matter of cleaning up that tax issue and stuff that was going on, it was a mess.
It wasn't.
It was a mess.
And, and, and it had gone on way, way, way too long.
Yeah.
And, and, and it needed to be fixed, and, and that, so that's what happened. But I don't, I don't think most of the members on the board, even then, were opposed to coming up with some solution to, but we had to clean up that mess.
Yeah, that was the prime directive.
It, it really was.
Complicated situations.
So we can, if the board wishes, wha- what I can do is talk to the landowners, set a budget, from out, and, and then go from there and kinda see what their appetites are. See what their appetites are.
Yes, go, 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 go.
Um, again, sort of a nice question, just because I don't know that much about how these things work. Uh, does the property now legally belong to Emily Abbott or to the person who paid the taxes?
Emily Abbott.
It's still in her name?
Yeah.
Yep.
I see.
Now, another resident didn't pay the taxes, but they would.
Yes. Okay, I didn't know whether that person had any sort of property rights to the, you know, whether she, basically, whether she, Emily Abbott is still the person to be negotiating with, or was she even up to date?
I think I can go over there and talk to her. I think I can go over there and talk to her. Um, I gave her a call first and then go to the property.
Yeah.
Channel there. We worked for several years on what's going on. Um, she's actually very nice.
Yeah.
Well, very sweet lady.
Yeah, she is.
Well, it, it even though we backed out of the, those agreements that had been made. Um. We didn't do is what we were hearing earlier to take the property.
Yeah.
You know, that wasn't the goal. And that was, but that wasn't the goal. The, the goal was just to clean up that. And, and you were a part of that, um. So, yeah. I, I, you, you said something about the, the, the Charlie Johnson robbery was, they're just asking for like, um, what?
I believe she wanted like a twenty year waiver, which at the time, I think. I believe it's like a thousand bucks. It wasn't much. Um.
Kind of low, right?
Yeah, and it wasn't. You know. And at the time, it was her and her son and her son had passed away.
Yeah.
So I think if Terry called, I haven't talked to her since.
It was Ed that started it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I thought it was Mullin who originally.
Yeah, I think it was, it was Jim.
It was Jim Mullin, yeah.
Yeah, cause it was back in like two thousand eleven that all this stuff started.
Yeah, they had been done before, but yeah. It, well, it was all the way from two thousand was the back taxes.
Right, but the agreement started in like eleven, twelve, somewhere near.
It was twenty something years of.
Yeah.
Interest and penalty accumulating and it was just on our books it.
I think Jim had cleared most of the back taxes.
That's just was a big one. We, we wrote them off twice.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
We wrote off some of it twice to our.
But it, it was, it was the agreements the board entered into that stopped kind of everything and interest and penalties were still adding up.
Yeah.
And we, and we waived some of those.
Yeah, but the amount of taxes owed was small compared to the.
That was around eighty thousand dollars.
There he is. Are you awake?
I'm here. Yep.
Are you sick?
Yeah, well, I got that, a little bit of that too. It's the welcome to summer cold.
Huh, I did not give that to you at the last meeting. Promise.
Yeah, definitely not.
Okay, you look into this and give us an update.
Yeah.
Yeah, if the board's. Willing, I think this is an exciting project, um.
So we can come up with.
Yeah.
We were up for a moment of the burden that existed before. Now we could just start at zero and forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Town manager update.
All right, I do have quite a bit of updates. Um, you have three minutes, I'll get.
Yeah, ten minutes.
One second.
Read back.
Hi, Nicky. Um. Waste water use and utility study, so I talked to Sprague, you were the engineer that's working on this project and we scheduled July fourteenth. Update in that project. Um, so. Are you telling me that I set the agenda? We'll put that on there. Uh, legal trail six. I feel this like four meeting on June ninth, I did receive a request. Um, to reclassify two hundred and thirty-five feet of legal trail six as a class four on the road. Um, and then just a couple of days later, I was asked to stop that process temporarily. Um, the owner notified me that they would like to postpone the request because. Um, they're, they're currently considering properties that are for sale in Woodest Hill and they mentioned the amount that it costs to build right now. Uh, which is extremely high. Um, so we're pausing on legal trail six right now.
Sure.
Um, if the property owner contacts me and tells me to resume, then at that point. Uh, I would bring, the next step would be for me to come to the select board and ask the board to want a public barrier. Um, and. Do the process. To change the legal two hundred and thirty-five feet to a class four on the road. Um, municipal fire department updates, um, after Chief Koppo was sworn in and we executed his contract. Um, we developed two job advertisements and two job descriptions, one for assistant fire chief, one for deputy chief. These positions we posted on the Woodest Hill website and distributed for our service community. After those positions are filled. Chief Koppo is going to work with the assistant fire chief and deputy fire chief to advertise the captain positions. Um. And then from there. Fire fighter applications will be posted and then we'll have everybody onboarded. So we expect. Forty-five to sixty days and we'll have everybody onboarded. It's what we're hoping. Uh, sheriff's department contract updates. We plan to complete the valuation of all police equipment vehicles by July seventeenth. And then from that time to July twenty-third, we'll be working with the sheriff's department, um, on what those values are. We anticipate the select board receiving the full package on July twenty. And what that will include is an itemized valuation of all police equipment and vehicles and then. A bill of sale that Tyler and I create. Um. And the, the agreement between us and the sheriff's department and then we can go from there if we believe it's. It's. In the best interest of the town, then we can move forward with it. If it's further reviewed, we can send it back. Uh, natural retirement, in the last meeting. Uh, the board asked about natural retirement on the warrant. Um, that's. That's the forfeit and severance compensation plans that are available to municipal employees. Um, basically you can opt in or opt out of this. You can contribute, um. How much you would like to and it, it gives tax advantages for retirement. You have free, free employees involved. Uh, website updates, Julia Donbar is currently undergoing training on Civic Plus. Um, so she did agree to do that. The training includes site management and content editing. It covers a wide range of tasks, including creating bulletin items, calendar events, informed documents. Editing, editing department and committee pages, embedding links, posting meeting agendas and minutes. Developing news items and announcements. Managing person profiles, uploading files, creating urgent alerts and other content. Um, working with tabs, uh, tabs and backend cabinet functions. Confirming display options and implementing slideshow. So that's like the first phase of the training. Once she has that and then she goes to the we- website, does her evaluation and fixes the existing website. We would have part two of the training, which is more advanced, uh, training that Civic Plus offers. Um, so she received all those trainings, a training schedule today. Um. And we hope that within the next couple of weeks, the thirty days, she'll be. She'll have completed those trainings. She is, she is eight hours a week, so she's doing. She's paled back some time for that and she does some other tasks for us as well, so it may be. Thirty days or so before she's fully at the bar. Um. We, we've also assigned rosters, um, to Julia. We thought we could have a designated person, both websites and the ro- and the rosters. Um, so I sent her all the rosters in a word document and she'll track those. Um, seats and track all the appointed officials. And she's working on the commission purposes submission statements. So.
Excellent. Can I interject a question here?
Yeah, of course.
Um. Uh, as I recall, Olivia was officially the person who had to warn the meetings and post permits and things. Is that now part of? Julia's job? Keep doing that or? So I guess, I guess my question is not about Julia, it's about who's doing it now.
So we, so I warn, so I do select board meetings, Ryan does DRV and zoning. Part, when the Parks Recreation Commission Agenda comes in, it's either Susan or I. Um, it's either the rest of them are either going to Susan or myself, suppose.
Okay, I just want to be, make sure that we don't end up with the same sort of kerfuffle that we had earlier.
We worked it out internally. I haven't heard any. Open meeting launches, so I think we're, we're in good shape there. Um, solid waste contract, so. That contract has been executed. We executed it on Friday, um. And that's for solid waste transportation disposal and recycling services. It's a four-year contract. Um. And we did discuss this in great length, we negotiated in great length and we believe that this solid waste contract. Represents the best overall value among available options.
And it sounds like all the other towns have decided to go with that of all.
Yeah, they did. So it did, it was, it did. In my opinion, break up the monopoly because for a long time it was just one hauler. So now we have another hauler. So they have competition in the marketplace. The competition keeps the prices down. Um. Finance updates, uh, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, it's time to begin preparation for closing the books. Um, so that's what we're doing. At the next meeting, I will present a preliminary year investment for all funds and any fund balances. Um. So over the next several weeks, we'll be finalizing our revenues and expenditures, reconciling bank accounts, grant balances, interfund transfers. Payroll accounts and accruals and adjustments, uh, reviewing capital projects and grants and preparing for our audit. Uh, female reconciliation. So female obligated one million, two hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and eighteen cents for our July twenty twenty-three flood. Recovery projects. Um, to date, we have received one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eighty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. And I believe that's all we will be receiving. Um, so we spent four hundred and thirty-nine thousand on the Estudny Basin Bridge project. The Upper Falls Covered Bridge Project is currently underway and we believe at the end of it, I talked to the engineer. And also the bid that we awarded, I believe we'll spend one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars on that project. Um. Board awarded the Little Estudny River Bridge project tonight for three hundred and forty-two thousand and we spent fifty-eight hundred on the Perkinsville Hydrant. Um, so total expenditures will be nine hundred and forty-one thousand, leaving a balance of one hundred and ninety-six thousand. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I didn't want to start discussions on four hundred thousand we had. Because when the bids came back, they did come back higher and we just spent two hundred thousand dollars more than anticipated. Um. The last, I'm attending the hundred and nineteen Government Finance Officer Association Conference in Washington DC, um, so. We're leaving on Saturday and then the conference ends on July second. Um, we did decide to extend it to July fifth and watch the fireworks in Washington DC. Um, my wife early on to do it, so. Um. And it could be a cool experience, but those are all the different trainings. I was, in my report, I did say. The schedule of this conference is attached in attachment A, but then I realized it was thirty pages, um.
Thank you.
So if you're interested in seeing the schedule, I can send it to you via email or you can just look up that conference, but those are. That's the list.
Put a body chain on you so we make sure you're one of those conferences.
The last thing is a special select board meeting, um. We'll need to warn, once we have education tax rates, we can't really warn the meeting right now because we don't know when we're gonna receive it, um. I believe between July seventh and ninth is when we'll have a special select board meeting. If there's any dates that are just. You know, available, please let me know, um, or Kelly. And we'll coordinate your schedule, but right now I think between July seventh and ninth, and usually it's a quick meeting. I calculated the tax rate, give everybody the, the detail of the work for eleven from last year and for eleven from this year. Make sure to stick early through the grand list. Um, and then what the tax rate will be for that point twenty cents, so. That's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Future agenda items?
Pizza.
Pizza? If, do we need to do anything about the discussion for item fifteen?
Where? Oh, yeah, we do. Look, town manager performance evaluation discussion. Does anybody do their own paperwork?
I don't know.
I didn't.
I bought your.
Thank God. My apologies.
And mine. We start getting silly afterwards.
Yeah. Well, it's almost nine o'clock.
Um.
Um, when, when do you want those to go?
Is that what we're gonna do? Just we're using that, that formula, that sheet to do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll send it to you guys in a word document, see if that's facing the right.
Apology for this coming.
And, uh, I would like as much feedback as possible.
And he doesn't care, it doesn't have to, he said it doesn't have to be an executive session. He doesn't care if we say it online.
I really only have one comment. I can give it to you then. And, and that comes out of one of the things that was sent in here and it had to do with, um, Julia. And, and you. You got enough on your plate. I'd like to see you delegate more so you can focus on.
We're working on.
That's your deal. I, I, I get that. I just, I just, I just know, uh, from the time I spent sitting in Kelly's chair there. I, I know how engrossed you get in. Everything. And I, I'd just like to see you delegate maybe a little bit more, so.
I'm working on it, Mike.
I do believe you're dead there, Mike.
Yeah.
Like, I really do.
Well, it's okay, it's your job. You know, I just.
Just wearing them out now, well.
Um, it was before.
Yeah, well, okay. Okay, so we just get those before the next meeting so we can discuss it. Be great. Okay, there's no appointments?
Oh, wait, sorry, picture agenda items. Sorry, do we have, um, a copy of the job? I know we have a copy of the contract that Brandon said. Do we have a copy of the job description?
There is.
There is.
The contract and statute is my job.
That is, that's all there is.
So if you read the statute, I send everybody an email.
I guess, I guess, yes, I guess so.
Yeah. There was draft job descriptions in the past, but the select board never finalized any job description.
So when, when the job was advertised, what, how was the job advertised?
That was before me. I think it was on that committee.
Yeah, it was. Um, yeah, there was a job description that, that we went by, but I think the job description basically, like Brandon said, followed the state statute and. Um, I think we had kind of summarized a list of, um. I, um, let me see. Uh, Ed, Ed was leading. But I think Ed had it too. Yeah, I know he did, cause I was on that committee too. Um, so, so we, we had like these paragraphs of, of, of what the job consisted of. More for guidance for him of what to expect us coming in to do the job.
Right.
Um, but yeah, that's, that's all it was. I, I, I'm. It's, I was on the committee when that was done for Ed. And I wasn't on the select board at that time. Uh, uh, so that stuff had been created before. Okay, it, it, it doesn't still exist somewhere? You haven't seen it?
It's not referenced in my contract either.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look under, um.
Well, anyway, you know what to do, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can. I'm not gonna say I have any mistakes.
But it was, it was mostly as a reference document for us or, you know, um.
Yeah, so you could evaluate how Willie's doing in, in, in respect to the job duties, the duties of the job.
Yeah.
Now I get it.
Let me see, let me see if I'm fair.
Um, so. In the contract. Under section one. It says duties as town manager and play grace upon the functions and duties specified by twenty-four VSA chapter thirty-seven. As may be amended from time to time. And perform legally permissible and proper duties and functions as the select board made from time to time aside.
Yeah. He was kind of saying.
That's what I've been.
Give me.
Any, any other questions on that? No? Future agenda items? So. When the. Warrant for the unlicensed dogs needs to go down there?
Yeah, I just need some time.
Okay, yeah.
With that, I'm not sure if I'll be ready for the next meeting, so.
All right, um. And the nuisance and uncapped property ordinance needs to go back down here.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else anybody wanna say on there?
Um, somewhere along the line, we lost track of the ethics policy and and appointing a liaison to the State Ethics Commission.
This thing's supposed to be getting shorter, not longer.
Oh, geez, my, the prying.
What's that?
Every time I come, you guys wanna add more to the list.
Oh wait, the board did appoint.
That's what I thought.
So that was done. We do have an ethics policy as well.
Is it, it's supposed to be posted on the website for years?
Town forced access gonna stay under future?
Yeah, Brandon's been checking out. There's no appointment.
I have one more picture than uh fireworks policy.
Yeah, oh yeah, I got that, my big notes over here.
I've had it. Go see Josh.
I think we're gonna say to Jake, Josh, something that's. Updated policy that's consistent with what the town.
Okay, any other business?
Question, I noticed on Facebook, uh no, front of the forum, that uh somebody presumably from the ready town. Uh, select board always posts before the meetings in a very sort of narrative form. That, you know, the meeting's coming up, and we're gonna be talking about, you know, the. Some, well, no, but they do, and I I don't know how many. What effect it has in terms of, but it's always made framed as sort of an invitation to. To sort of come to the meetings and be part of this whole process and so forth, and I wondered if there was any interest, I mean, I would be willing to. To to write it up and post it, if 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 anybody felt that that might be worth. I mean, I think it benefits us to have, frankly, to have people show up here, so.
But increases public participation, I mean, I could certainly try, this makes a difference.
I think you're gonna wanna be careful about getting into conversations about the agenda prior to meetings. Uh, because people are gonna ask you questions if you start going into public forum like that, which is, I'm I'm not oppo- opposed to it, I'm just cautioning you about. You know, when you post something and you say, well, we we have this topic on, somebody's gonna be like, well. You know, what are you gonna, you know, have you considered this on this time, they're gonna start the discussion. That's what I'm saying, just don't, I'm just cautioning you, don't get into those.
Oh, yes, I know, you can shut that feature off when you post on posting, say, no, I don't wanna. Do not email the centers, so people could see it, but they can't.
Oh, I'm fine with it, I just say, watch out. It it the other thing is, you know, because once the discussion starts. You you know, you get a couple of board members starting to get involved, you gotta, now you're crossing some other lines.
Of course, of course. We gotta get a copy of the purchase policy this time.
Yeah, it's right over there. Is Nancy?
Yeah, yeah, she was the one who walked, yeah.
Uh Kelly, just one other thing under this other business, uh uh you don't have to write it down, it'll be in your head. Just keep getting after us, make sure we get done with this thing for Brandon.
Yeah, there we go.
Kick kick us, kick us around, make sure we got.
Send a reminder email or something.
A week ahead. Have I sent a reminder, is that, is that a?
You're probably gonna need a baseball bat and my address.
Does Nate have anything to add?
Do you have anything you wanna add?
I think that list is nice and long.
Yeah, we're just waiting for you to finish it all. Okay, approve the warrant.
Motion to approve the warrant, general fund payroll seventeen thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars ninety-seven cents. Operating expense fifty-six thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars fifty-nine cents. Highway fund payroll ten thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars eighty-six cents. Operating expense sixteen thousand nine hundred forty dollars twenty-six cents. Solid waste management fund payroll two thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars ninety-eight cents. Operating expense twenty-three thousand three hundred twelve dollars forty-six cents. Library payroll. Two thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars seventy-four cents, operating expense zero. Dry hydrant, soaring vines, cobra. I believe these are, I don't know what they are, total thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, grant totals payroll thirty-two thousand. Five hundred forty dollars fifty-five cents, operating expense one hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars thirty-one cents.
Well, second. Any discussion, I don't have any this time. Believe it or not, Mike.
Well, that's good.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, motion to adjourn?
Aye.